At six o'clock, right on time. Introductions, Warren Levy, Chair, Paul Rantella is my partner in crime on the committee. And Donnie Taylor can't make it, he's out of town. We have, to my left, we have the Chief Jeff Harold, Finance Director. It's Jean Blair, Les Paire, Corporation Counsel, Matt Kazavec, from Western Connecticut Health Network. And we have the public in general, Tony Simone, from the Danbury Ambulance Service. Our committee mission is to review and consider ratification of the contract to continue the ambulance service with Western Connecticut Health Network as the provider. And we've been given the contract, which is an extension of a previous contract. It's an option that I believe is taken, being taken available, or taken advantage of. The, my experience has been that the Danbury Health Network has provided excellent service. I hear very few complaints about the service itself. As for this contract, I would defer to our Corporation Counsel to tell us what changes have been made or what highlight do we have in the contract that you'd like to point out to the committee.
Warren, the first change is the name of the entity that the city is contracting with. That changes to Western Connecticut Health Network affiliates. That's the first change. That's a, that's the main change of the entity that's going to be executing the contract if the Council approves it. Used to be called Danbury Hospital Corporation.
Danbury Healthcare Affiliates.
Healthcare Affiliates. So that's one change. Another change is that if, look at Article seventeen of the contract provides specifically designate, designates Matt as the authorized official for purposes of operational and decisional components of the services to be provided. He has been doing that anyway. This codifies it in the agreement. Then there's, you'll look at Schedule A, which is the schedule that provides for the vehicle descriptions. There've been some modifications to those descrip, to those vehicles because of change in time five years ago, different vehicles versus now. The Schedule B, Mr. Chairman, is the continuation of the HIPAA federal law, Business Associate Dental Agreement. There have been some changes to that, largely clarifications and expansions because of the continuing nature of this and related federal law. HIPAA intends to protect health information of individuals and others at scenes of incidents. The hospital folks and, and, and our office, as well as the city, have been engaged in, in the last few months in, in determining the application of HIPAA to city providers, fire and police, as well as finance, and the application of HIPAA to other providers of these services, and how those work together in a way that both protects the health information and also doesn't violate any provision in the federal law. Trying to work through the maze of HIPAA is not easy. It's possible, but it's not easy. The reason it's difficult is that the definitions of entities are not always totally clear. But what we, I think we, we have agreed on, and I've dealt with counsel for the hospital largely with this, is that the city, as well as its, its agent, intend to apply HIPAA in a way that doesn't violate the federal law, but also doesn't violate the operational duties of, of city officials who need to do, perform their tasks in, in ways that are separately authorized, let me put it that way. We've issued a, and across my client, we've issued, or our clarifying position on the subject from our point of view, and we continue to work with that with the hospital. We don't think that this agreement will in any way negatively affect that relationship, but it's worth the progress. So that's change number three. This has been a, a, a small amendment, a relative small amendment to Schedule B for HIPAA agreement. There's one other change having to do with a fourth ambulance. There are three ambulances that are provided for. There's to be a fourth ambulance on the west side. I don't think the location's been determined for that as yet, but in order to provide additional service there, this agreement provides for, for that fourth west side ambulance. I think, just one other thing, I'll just see for sure. Those are the elements that have been changed.
This right here, if I may.
The fourth ambulance?
The fourth ambulance, which we started a couple of years ago. So we're just kind of rolling that into the contract. And we did that as a modification of service before the, not in the agreement five years ago, but we, we expanded the service to, to notice that there was a gap there.
Yeah, there was, there was one other change that I already have addressed it. That is in Article, so we've united memorized the agreement, but almost. Article four, page sixteen of fifty-six, there's a provision that addresses HIPAA again, and that the, there's an agreement that the parties comply with all state and federal laws regarding HIPAA. We don't, we don't have any objections to that. The city agrees with that. We do have to abide by it anyway, and we'll continue to work to try to, try to clarify the HIPAA's application. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I, I guess it's more protective than anything HIPAA existed on the last contract as well, but it wasn't included as an addendum. Is there something that prompted that, or just changing times necessitated it being incorporated?
There was actually included, there was a HIPAA addendum, but there's been some modifications in order to expand its application a little bit, clarify some of the, but there was. The Business Associate Agreement is, is what Exhibit B is, Schedule B is. It simply provides that the, the Western Connecticut Health Network affiliates is to be the business associate for purposes of this agreement to implement HIPAA, and that the Danbury Emergency Medical Service is the hiring agent, if you will. And, and, and that's the essence of the Business Associate Agreement, is to draw the, the application of HIPAA into this arrangement between EMS, Danbury EMS, and the hospital.
David, yes, it, I mean, the conversation on HIPAA actually started a few years, a few years ago during the audit, and the auditors, that audits the ambulance fund, you know, reviewed it and suggested that we have a stronger HIPAA policy and, and update. So we looked at it over the last couple of years, and not only in this agreement, but also between us and our billing agent, and us and the hospital. So it really affects, you know, in addition to this, we have to make certain internal operational changes in order to ensure that we're compliant, currently compliant with HIPAA.
But, you know, I think I'll, I'll open this portion of it, and then the operational portion, maybe the chief, as well as Matt will have some comments to make in that. But I don't, do you have any questions?
You know, I just had a comment about the holding harmless, that could be page twenty-two of the old edition, I guess it's page twenty-three of the new one. And I guess five years ago, two point five million seemed adequate. It seems a little low to me. I was wondering if we could go a little bit higher than that without having to redo the whole contract. I'd be a little bit more comfortable with liability insurance.
I think we could three million.
Like three million, and maybe you could, I mean, it just seems, it's pretty, we're a pretty litigious society, and, and these guys are doing something that could result in serious exposure to taxpayers in Danbury. That, that, that's all my point is.
I, I think it was increased to that about five years ago. Certainly, it's before you now for recommendations to change, before you ask that, that be increased, if that's your, if that's your request.
It, it would be mine, yeah, you know, somebody maybe will look at before we go to the full council. But I'd, I'd like to hear, you know, the, the company's views on that too, so that's all I have at the moment.
One question I have, and, you know, the feedback I get is everybody's very positive about the ambulance service. Of course, it's, sometimes it's hard to generate complaints when you're sick and on the ambulance, you're not complaining about the bumps in the road. You're more concerned about other things, but I, overall, I think that everybody is happy with that performance. The only comments I've heard, and I mentioned this to David earlier, was the cost of the ambulance, the cost of the service. And I've asked for some information on that, but, and I, it's my feeling that probably labor and training is to have the quality of service that we do is, has an important part on the impact on cost. And I wonder if the fourth ambulance, that as I read it, wasn't aware, whether the additional manpower there, how, what the impact is as far as cost is concerned.
Yeah, we, we added that, I think it's two years ago now, right? And, and basically, that's not, and it's, it's really in the off hour, so that's not something we're going to recover our revenue on. But it's, it's something that we noticed that we can provide a value-added service for the community. And we do that quite frequently, as, as we set, you know, Matt and I will sit down and review certain items of, it's not always about the money, it's about the value that we can provide for the community. In addition to, of course, you know, making sure that we can, you know, continue to operate, you know, as efficiently as we can. So, you know, we look at the pricing structure, we look at, you know, where, where we have gaps in this. So whether it's providing support services for other communities, you know, in addition to our own, where, when we can, we do. And, and we don't recover our, our cost on that either. But built into that mix, the pricing mix, are, are those items that we provide support services for the homeless and, and, you know, the other city agencies throughout the city that we may not recover very much, if any, anything on.
Yeah, I think there was something in paper recently about one individual on Main Street that was taken one hundred and ninety-seven times last.
Yeah, the frequent flyers, I mean, you know, and when you look at the fixed cost of, of something like that, forget the variable, but the fixed cost, you're not recovering anything on it. So there's, but there's still that fixed cost on, on taking that ambulance out of servicing anywhere else to, to take that person and deliver it to the hospital or wherever they're going to go. So there's always going to be that, that frequent flyer somewhere in the city. And, but you, you have to, you have to balance it out, because we, we do provide a community service, a public service. So, you know, it's not a, although we, we get about it, we, we don't operate a business, but we want to operate like a business and provide that service as efficiently as possible, while, while providing the, the needed services, often, sometimes at a, a loss, but it's a needed service to the community to cover those gaps. And, and so those other areas where we can make money, that helps offset those times when we don't make money.
That, that was my concern. Now I'd ask the Chief if he has any comments as far as how it interfaces with the, the service interfaces with the fire department, because it is the first responders.
As, as the department, as the first responder agency, our interface and, and commonality is, is really very, very good. We have a similar purpose. Crews get along, the system is very tightly honed right now, other than, as the issue was mentioned, using the term frequent flyers, a term I personally don't necessarily agree with, but the idea is that there are people that have learned to game the system, if you will, and, and there are some of those out there. But the reality of it is, that doesn't affect the working relationship. The working relationship between the, the crews provided by the, by the hospital and the fire department crews right now are exemplary. We get along well, we accomplish the mission, and that really is the core of the relationship, is the mission. And, and right now, I, rarely do we ever get complaints on, certainly on, from the users of the system. So right now, I can only say that the system is working extraordinarily well.
Matt, you have any comments as far as how you feel about it? How you, you know, I think the, most people understand here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the city of Danbury holds a license for ambulance service, and we own all the equipment as well. And the provider of personnel is the, the service from the current Midwestern Council, what is it?
Western Connecticut.
Western Connecticut. It's been three times it's changed since, since I've chaired this, but go ahead.
I simply echo what Chief Harold, Chief Harold had indicated, is the operational oversight of the program and interface between the fire department and, and emergency medical services has never been better. And the reason why that is, is we work towards that end. We meet regularly, the fire chief chairs, the EMS oversight committee, which we meet at least quarterly, sometimes more. We've also brought the Director of Finance into some of our meetings to look at the business aspect of, of the program, to make sure that, from a financial perspective, we're looking at how we're sharing resources, how we're being more efficient, but most of all, the focus on public safety and the delivery of emergency services, through the fire department, through other public safety agencies within the city of Danbury, as well as the health department and others. So those partnerships, those relationships that have been honed over the last twenty years have only gotten stronger because of the idea that we all work together and we work at it. We make sure that we meet, and we're always looking to perform, improve. It's not just, we're complacent, this is, it's always looking to improve. And that largely is because of leadership within the city, the fire department, certainly of the Director of Finance as well. We're always looking at ways we can do things better, improve, make the service the best we possibly can. So there is little complacency after twenty years providing this service, and I'm happy to, to be part of a program like that.
With changing medical requirements, especially as it relates to senior citizens and things like that, is that going to affect your billing or anything like that, being that they're becoming more stringent in that respect?
I think over the next several years, with the Affordable Care Act and what, you know, what that potentially could, what the impact could be, it is on our minds. That's the reason why we have been looking ahead at, at models to reduce risk and reduce utilization, frankly, of, of emergency services to get ahead of this. It's likely that the paradigm will change, that programs may be reimbursed for, and rewarded for proactive measures to prevent emergencies before they happen. And really, we're, we're ahead of that. And the reason why we're ahead of that is because we're up on the times, we see what's going on, the trending, and we're trying to be ahead of a potentially, you know, over the next five years with the Affordable Care Act. Right now, there's a lot of questions, but we're not waiting for those particular questions. We are getting ahead of that with some of the programs that we're undertaking as far as reducing risk.
What could a resident typically expect when they call for a service?
Well, it depends on the acuity of, of the emergency meeting, the, the level of emergency, how, the seriousness of, of the call. I'm proud to say that our dispatchers are all trained in emergency medical dispatch. So they, we use the word interrogate, it's, it's not a very good word, but they are able to get information from the caller on what is, what is going on in residence. And they do that very, very well. And the reason why they do that is we want to be able to send the right resource to them in the right mode of response as well. So we have really been very aggressive to, to the point of liability and risk is to determine what type of emergency it is, what response mode the apparatus, the equipment that's been assigned to that call will be responding in, and what type of resource, whether it's a fire department first response vehicle, whether it's a paramedic ambulance, these are all city, these are all part of the programs or law enforcement as well.
Well, I guess I was wondering what the medical end of it, what could they expect as far as training of, of the individuals that are going to be coming?
All the personnel that, that respond are trained at the highest level. We send paramedic staff, the ambulance on every call in the city of Danbury, that's the highest level of service. And again, based on the acuity, based on the nature of the call, they all may, they also may get a first responder, any company. And of course, as you know, Warren, all any companies, all fire department apparatus have defibrillators, which are critical for life safety, and all are trained with emergency medical technicians.
Is there anything else we should be understanding in the committee, and is there anything else that my committee member has?
Yeah, I'd just say a, a general question for, say for BLS, somebody calls from, I don't know, Anhac or something like that, they've got to go to the hospital. What could they expect to get billed for the trip for their, what's the general area with, not, not advanced, I mean, I've been some incredibly, you know, complicated car accident or something like that, but shortness of breath and it's decided, the doctor says you better go to the emergency room if they call you, what's it going to cost?
What I've done is I've provided the, the rate schedule for the committee to contemplate. Nowhere here is, and on the other side is just some, some more, more detail as far as what the expenses of the actual program and the breakdown of those expenses are. But if, I'll call attention to this document here. The ambulance service rate schedule is each year, the city of Danbury, Director of Finance, along with the fire chief and myself, go through a process where we look at what the rate increase is defined by the Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services. And we have taken a position where we, we have not substantially increased the rates. Basically, we take the minimum increase that the state offers, and that's a process where we provide the state health department lots of information.
Sure.
And here are the actual rates. Nowhere is, is the rate, and the rate schedule is just that. Certainly, the insurance, the payer, you know, and the payer mix has a lot to do with what the actual reimbursement is. And that's why we pay such close attention to the actual breakdown as far as our payer mix in Danbury, and how much exactly what we're getting paid for on these particular calls. But here's the actual rate schedule here. If you don't mind, we'll just, just turn it over, and I, I've provided, because my understanding is there was a question about expense, and what does it look like as far as the expenses go for the ambulance fund? And this is the fully loaded expense analysis of the program, broken down. I'll also call to your attention that within this, within this document, we have all of, all the program, including the first responders as well. So when the fire department first responders go out, there is money allocated for, within the ambulance fund, to reimburse that particular aspect of, of the program.
If I may?
Certainly.
You've, you've got thirty-eight thousand for fuel here, and the city itself takes care of its own equipment? Is that how that works? Do we maintain the equipment?
We do not maintain the ambulance, it's not, it's specialized equipment.
We, we own the equipment, but they maintain it?
Yes.
Those are at certain level that we insist on, or some sort of verification for that maintenance?
Well, it, it's a very specialized type of equipment. I, I can't really speak to that, but really, they, they have to certify their equipment and provide it to us.
Is there some sort of a state agency that does that, like, you know, you're like, for a homeowner, it might be an emissions thing, but for you guys, it's something else, where they inspect the equipment and all that, so that we know that we're getting what we're paying for, and you guys take care of it?
Yes. The vehicle is inspected not only by the motor vehicle department, but by, by the Office of Emergency Medical Services, well, annually.
Well, in addition to DMV, there's this other level just for the emergency vehicles. Make sure that all that stuff is working properly.
That's correct.
Is that an annual certification?
Every two years.
All right, thank you.
If that's, have any, any questions, you problems, or you have?
I, I have not, as a, a councilperson, ever received a complaint about your service. I mean, nobody's ever picked up, I get complaints all the time about stuff about, oh, how come we're spending so much money, I mean, it's still Riverwood, there's so many shopping carts around. And for something as, as critical to, you know, to your well-being as, as a right of the hospital, whether it's because of an accident or shortness of breath or something, you got to figure between yourself and your parents and your friends, if there's issues, somebody's going to hear about it. Somebody's going to pick up the phone and make a phone call or send an email. I've never gotten that. And so that, you know, I mean, with all due respect, nobody's ever called me up and said, those guys are really swell, I just want to tell you. But from my point of view, for a service like this, no news is good news. People have a tendency to go bananas when an ambulance is late or something like that, and we hear about it. And I, speaking personally, I've never heard of the, the slightest criticism for the service. So as far as I'm concerned, the system seems to be working. If we can afford the contract, I'm going to leave that up to you, you know.
Well, the one thing I will say is that we, and I'm saying we, the collective, we, you know, as the team here, between the city and, and Matt, you know, when we do hear issues or concerns or complaints or inability to pay, you know, we have a process, and it's a documented process that we go through to, to try to resolve the issue in a, in the least painful way. Because for one thing, they've already had a trauma. We don't want to aggravate that. So we're very sensitive to, to that part of it. And, you know, I, I can tell you, you know, working with, with Matt and the chief, you know, as Matt said, we meet quarterly. These guys are incredible professionals, and the people they work with are amazing. It, it's a great team to work with, and, and they've done a phenomenal job. The response, you know, the handoff between, you know, when the call is made to dispatch to the first responders under the chief, to Matt's team, is incredible. I mean, it really is. And the, the fund is operating well, but that, it, it's a team effort. And, you know, and if, when there are positive results to the fund, and there are, that helps the, the rest of emergency services. You know, it helps us get the equipment and the supplies and the things that we need, you know, for the other areas of, of public safety.
Are we, if I may, are we generally breaking even on an annual basis?
We're, we're, we're ahead of the game on that, but that helps us, you know, because first, we cannot bill for first responders. But, you know, when we do have some surplus, we, we try to, to buy some equipment or, or shift some money over. And that's where you usually see that inter-fund transfer. But that was in previous years. Now what we do is, instead of billing the customer, we bill the fund, you know? And, and that's, because it is an enterprise fund now, we're able to do that for the first responders, so.
Okay, well, I would, I have a suggested one to review that.
Are we at that point, do you think?
Unless you have something to add.
Hey, do you want to add anything, or we?
Warren, to ask you, if you guys wanted to up the insurance, can I ask you what amounts you were thinking of, we had to go through the risk manager?
Yeah, I was looking at three. See, the thing is, I've got two different numbers here. I've got the insurance, which is at three. That's on page seventeen of forty-three of the new contract. And then I've got the hold harmless, which is a two-five, I don't know what page it is, it's on twenty-three of the new contract. So I'm, I'm, there's two, I'm looking at two different numbers here. I'm comfortable with their insurance at three, with the five thousand dollar deductible on page seventeen. I, I would like to see hold harmless go up to three, which is on page twenty-three. And I'd also like to hear from Matt, is that, is this, is this one of those figures, that extra five hundred thousand, is that going to screw the whole thing up, or is there some room in there for that?
Yeah, I can't, I can't say that, that would, that would something that I'd have to go back to the hospital. I know that insurance, we've, we've adjusted that throughout the years as you pointed out. I know that insurance, um, we've, we've adjusted that throughout the years as you pointed out, as Les has pointed out. So we'll, we'll take a look at this.
If, if I may, I mean, one, one really deals with, uh, you know, the employees and officers. So I, I would suggest that we review, you know, both of these. If, if they need to be the same, then okay. I, I wouldn't necessarily tie them together because they are different types of insurance.
Yeah, I, I wasn't suggesting that they needed to be the same. I was uncomfortable with two point five, but I'm comfortable with the other one at three. I'm not saying we need to make them the same.
I would recommend we look at both of them. You know, I mean, you bring up the valid point. Let's look at both of them. But, uh, you know, and we'll, we'll look at them independently and we'll look at them, all the amounts.
May I suggest, because I can see where this involves a number of issues that risk management really has to take a look at.
Yeah.
There's factors, and I don't know what the impact would be on, on premiums that in turn, and what your insurance through the, your parent organization is and how that impacts this insurance.
I could tell you our, you know, our, um, our umbrella would be five million typically. The whole harmless, I'm not sure about that one. I, I can't remember what that one is. I, I, I can't, I don't think it's the same as the other one. So, uh, but I.
That's why I was suggesting that it takes on with insurance expertise to take a look at the whole picture and adjust it as necessary.
How about this, if I may, before we go to the body on the dais next month?
Yeah.
Or next week, whenever it is. Is it going to, are we putting this on next week?
It'll be in the next month.
Yeah, okay. So a couple of weeks. Could this have a report?
Sure. That'd be fine.
I'm not going to hold the motion up. I mean, I'd like to know if we could do this and, you know, what effect it'll have when it trickles through. Fine.
It's, we'll, we'll make it, we'll make sure it's current with, with our, our amount. And of course, that, that I'm sure, I'm not going to speak for the, for you guys, but, um, you know, they've, they've always been, uh, you know, willing to become compliant with whatever is required.
Would you advise us, us of the change, if any, prior to?
I'll shoot you an email.
Prior to the meeting, okay?
Yeah.
In this, in that event, if we, we can process this through, it's not going to be held up in any way. You know, so that you can warn us in advance of any alterations and changes.
In this, in this regard, there's, I think there's two separate matters to think about, maybe Matt for your, your side. Number one, and I think it came up five years ago, is the, the insurance, I think, was increased at that, at that time. Insurance may or may not be increased. Depends on what the hospital can do. The, the whole harmless language on the two and a half million really is an intention on the part of the hospital party to try to cap its exposure, not including insurance. Okay, so insurance increases their ability to cover the claim. But in terms of a cash, let's call it a cash compensation for injury damage, it's capped at two and a half. And that's intended, I think, and something that they can check, I think, is to protect themselves from a non-insurance liability side, which I would try to as well. Whether, whether the two and a half million is adequate for, for the whole harmless part.
In my opinion, it's not. They're offloading their risk onto, onto me and I would, I would prefer that we, you know.
Again, remember that the insurance will cover above that. There's a, there's a cap of fifteen million dollar personal liability malpractice insurance. Pretty good. The only insurance better than that, I think, is our airport insurance.
That's right.
Pretty high. So it's, in terms of insurance, it's pretty strong. Whether you want to increase the hold harmless is really a fact question for the hospital. Can you increase your non-insurance exposure another five hundred? That's, that's easy enough to answer.
That's it. Follow along? Okay.
And we'll have that answered prior to the meeting.
Yeah, and then obviously also, if I can just continue, if, with that change, I, I, I hope that that change would not necessitate sending us back, recommitting this. I mean, that we could do it on the, on the dais.
So long as, so long as the, the committee indicates now that if the hospital cannot make a change, you're okay with that?
I don't want to tip my hand. I want to tell these guys they don't have to do it before.
He's right there, so.
Well, exactly. I, I, I would, no, I mean, I would, I would, I'm taking this seriously.
Okay. Okay. Got it?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the city, uh, ratify, the city council ratify the proposed contract between the City of Danbury and Western Connecticut Health Network from July first, two thousand thirteen, and terminating June thirty eighth, two thousand eighteen, with an option to renew for five years commencing July one, two thousand eighteen. I would like to add at the request of both parties for that, with that renewal in two thousand eighteen.
I'd case the motion. Would you mind if I suggested after the ratify and, and extend? Or and renew is even better, and.
Renew because.
How about just the city council renew?
Ratify and renew.
Ratify and renew? Okay, that's fine. Okay, make a motion for the city council ratify and renew the proposed contract.
And the reason for that, just so you guys know, is that the, the council essentially is, is waiving any bidding on this. It's going to the hospital.
And, and this is an option that's being exercised here. It's not a new contract, so it doesn't have to go back to planning or anything like that. This has already been agreed upon. It's an extension.
And, and so there's no confusion in two thousand eighteen, the renewal, which will probably require an ad hoc like we had today. It'll sure be just forty-five minutes long, be at the agreement of both parties.
Yeah, that's, that's actually the way it is right now.
I understand. I just wanted the motion.
Just the motion.
Okay, I would second that motion. Try the motion. I don't see any disagreement. Unanimous consent here. And entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you.